Good evening, everyone.
Good evening, everyone.
I'd like to welcome you all to the Clayton County Board of Trustees Meeting for the Month of November the 11th. Those viewing this on YouTube, my name is Dwayne Thaddeus and I'm the Chair of the Board. At this time, I want to call the meetings to order. We're going to start off with our main location by Pastor Bruce Stewart. He's the Advent pastor of the Chapel General Board Pastor.
Thank you, guys. Want to take this moment, I want to say what an honor it is to be here today, this evening, to be able to deliver this blessing over what you guys are doing. Obviously, what you're doing matters, and the people you serve, they matter. And so, I'm sure that they appreciate what you guys do as well. I don't know if this is conventional or not, but I did want to read a quick verse of scripture out of Isaiah, Chapter 55, this one that I've really been in lately. And it just says this, "For my thoughts and not your thoughts, neither are your ways my ways," declares the Lord. "As the heavens are higher than the earth, so are my ways higher than your ways, and my thoughts than your thoughts." As rain and the snow come down from heaven, and do not return to it without watering the earth and making it flood and flourish, so that it yields seed from the sower and bread for the eater, so is my word that goes out from my mouth. It will not return to me empty, but will accomplish what I desire and achieve the purpose for which I send it. Just want to say really quickly, to keep that verse in mind as you sit here and as you go over the things that you're going to go over, talk about the things that you're going to do, even when it feels like it doesn't matter, if you're doing the thing that the Lord has called you to, it will not return void, because your being obedient to Him. So, just wanted to give you guys that quick reminder. Let's pray. Heavenly Father, we praise You. God, we thank You for today. We thank You for what You are doing here in this place, in this county, in this city. God, we pray that this meeting would be not only productive, Lord, but it would be fruitful. Meaning that the things that is talked about, the things that are discussed, become more than just topics, but they become moments of action. What I pray, that You would give the leadership here today, guidance, Lord, that You would lead them in all that they're doing. Father, I pray, Lord, that You would help us to use wisdom and to be good stewards of the resources that You have given us, because we do not take lightly the things that You have provided. God, we do not take lightly the leadership that You have entrusted us with today. Lord, I pray that You would bring favor to those who are faithful and true to You. God, that You would show a light on them, and Father, that they would find favor in the rooms that they walk in and the rooms that they have not walked in yet. Lord, I pray that You would infiltrate the county offices and remove anything or anyone who would stand against what You, the Lord, has called and ordained. Lord, I pray that today, You would give the leaders strength and endurance to withstand the ups and downs and the weight of leadership. Don't get weary and well-doin', because God wastes nothing. Lord, let the forefront of all of this, let the forefront of all of this, all that we're doing, the leadership, the topics of discussion, all of the things, Lord, Lord, let them come to pass, Lord, as You give them, Father, and let us lead by serving of excellence. Lord, I pray that these things would come to pass, these things would happen. Lord, and just remind us to treat one another with honor, dignity, and respect, as You have called us to do. In the name of Jesus, we pray, amen.
Okay, I want to thank Pastor Stewart for his participation. Moving right along, we have Chief Secretary Nelson Sarro, please.
Chair Dwayne Thaddeus.
Present.
Herman Andrews.
Present.
Sherri Stahl. Ebony Brown. Brenda Gutierrez. Shepherd Isaac.
Present.
Quinn Lee. Trina Horwalt.
Present.
Okay, Salima Agua. Sherri Gaines. And Sabrina Skidmore.
Okay, Chief Secretary, we have a call.
Yes, we do.
All right. Moving right along, we're going to approve the agenda. I have a motion to approve the agenda. I move that we approve that. It's been properly moved by Trustee Andrew, is there a second?
Say.
Seconded by Trustee James, are there any questions? Here in the hall, the favor say aye.
Aye.
Any pauses, any objections? Second item on the agenda, the next item on the agenda will be the approval of the minutes of October 14. I have a motion, please.
I approve the minutes of October 14.
It's been properly moved by Trustee Brown, is there a second?
My second.
Uh, I can remove, and seconded by Trustee Skidmore, are there any questions?
Yes.
Yes.
Section 12, policy updates, if you go to the Core Circulation Policy Updates. Should be the second to the last page.
Okay.
Under the listing of devices, we have Launchpad, tablets, box, monitors. The fourth item, or as it is Yoto, that should be Wazoo, W-A-Z-O-O-D-L-E, style audio devices. So, the device is titled, or it's called Wazoo. You got that, Chief Secretary?
I did, thank you.
Okay. It's been properly moved, and seconded with the corrections. Any all favors say aye. Any pauses, any objections? Chief Secretary, do we have any vice of public comments?
We do not.
Okay, we have the director's report.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Happy Veterans Day.
Happy Veterans Day.
Thank you for your service. Anyone else, any other veterans in the house? Thank you, anyone online. Again, we extend our thank yous and thank you for your service. I also want to thank our Clayton County Library staff for the work that they do, tired students, they, uh, they do fantastic job. So, for the month of October, I'm writing to add the updates that I would like to share. I'm not going to do a coffee librarian update, because I was there for that episode, so I'm going to leave to definitely give you the update on coffee. But we did have our animal staff development day. Couple of years ago, we worked with the Board of Commissioners and asked that we have an annual day where we are closed, all records are closed, and we have a full day of training and fun. And so, that happened on the first Monday, second Monday, I'm sorry, which is normally Indigenous Peoples' Day. And we had a fantastic lineup, we had breakout sessions, we had some line dancing, we had some chair yoga, we gave out some awards, as you see some of the pictures here. Our awards aren't just the normal, you know, top employee for the month, or, you know, best person for the year. We kind of put a little spin on it. So, one of the awards is the champagne award, and that is the staff person has the most sparkling attitude. And so, we'll see, again, some of the pictures from that day, these are some of the managers who were involved in the coordination of the event. So, it was a great day. I think there were a couple of trustees who joined us that day, and we thank you again for participating and showing up. More, if you're available next year, we're looking at maybe doing things a little different. We learn every year on how we can improve and make things better, and so, we'll do that again next year. So, also for the month of October, we participated in the Sheriff and the Solicitor General's Chopper Tree Event that was hosted over at the Justice Center, Tarral Boulevard. It was incredible. I don't know the foot traffic count, but there was a line of traffic up and down Tarral Boulevard both ways trying to get in. And so, we had our local mail out, and we ran out of candy, I think about the first 20 minutes. We re-upped, I think, three different times with candy, so it was a very popular thing. We're getting invited to more and more community events like that, and so, you'll see us. You'll see us in the community, you'll see us at events like that, events with the school district, parent liaison meetings, what have you. So, we're in the community, and we intend to bring services to the people where they are. Also for the month of October, you may recall, I wasn't around much. I had a lot of travel during the month of October. I attended the Library Journal Directors Summit, and we talked a lot about artificial intelligence in the library field and how we can make an impact in our communities with AI. Next month, you'll hear about an event that took place last week at the Northwest Libraries, AI for Everyone event, and we'll share more about it next month. But AI in the library field, it's not a new thing, but again, trying to get a hold of how we can use it, how we can shape users and the community to use it to their advantage. And so, we're still kind of feeling our way through that, but we're making good headway on artificial intelligence. So, stay tuned. One of the other conferences that I attended was the Urban Library Council's Directors Summit in Nanate, Cincinnati. And Deputy Director Stanley and I both attended that one, so first opportunity to attend that conference. And that is for an organization of major urban libraries across the United States and Canada. So, probably 250 or more library directors and leadership in the world, and it's a fabulous place to network. When you get to, when you get to leadership roles, sometimes it can be very isolating. And this is an opportunity and forum where we share ideas, we network. How do you do this in your library? How do you go about doing that? And I mentioned Staff Development Day a moment ago. We were at a table with my colleague down in Savannah, as well as a director from Indianapolis, two very different library systems. And again, being able to ask them, well, what do you do for Staff Development Day? How do you do it? Hmm, cool, I like that. We might be able to incorporate that. And so, these conferences are, in my opinion, so, they're rich with information and rich with networking opportunities. So, we will continue to participate in those and bring back the information we give home, so, good stuff. Couple of things that I just make sure I don't, I'm going to go ahead, if I may, where it says new business MOU agreement, because I do have in my updates. So, we will have two memorandum of understandings being presented to the Board of Commissioners the next two meetings. So, the meeting next week, we will have a MOU with a veterans organization, and the organization's program is called Positive to Negative. And this gentleman works with veterans and works more with the mental health of the veterans. And so, we're very excited to be able to offer that service to our community. The other MOU is with the Health District, to where we will be providing HIV/AIDS testing and education. And mistaken, at each of the branches, we will be rolling that out. So, yes, so each of the branches, we will have something set up to where we can have the testing and the education at each of those locations. That's pretty much what I wanted to share with you this evening. Are there any questions, any comments, any concerns?
Let me expand on the Staff Development Day.
Yes, sir.
Earlier, you used the word "balding." I love using the word "embarrassment," because it really describes your deputy director and all the other employees that follow underneath your leadership on how engaged and how enthusiastic they are in doing this job. And out of all the branches that I have been in, I haven't seen a style face in doing the job. Even when I'm in, you ask for assistance, it's always not just because I'm a chair, but it's always, what can I do to help you? And they speak by my side. And so, again, as I said before, I'll say again, that it shows that it's commitment from the leadership. If you have a good leader, you'll get good results. If you're bad, you're going to get bad results. And so, I see nothing but positivity coming out of these branches, and there's the embarrassments that they're showing because of what you, how you carry yourself, both of you carry yourself, and I do appreciate that. The other thing I want to ask about the HIV testing, is that some kind of kit that you give someone, or you go home and you test it?
Still working through the details of that. I'm not sure if they will have actual staff on site to administer the test, or if it will be taken. So, we should have more information every next month.
So, and so, when you said that, for the next two BLCPs, it may not keep up until 2026?
True. It may not start up until the first of the calendar year. And thank you for those kind words. And as I start every Board of Trustee meeting with kudos to myself, I can't do it and don't do it myself. I have surrounded myself with a group of folks who are dedicated, they enjoy what they do, and they show us, and so, thank you for that.
Well, you have comments, questions? Okay, thank you.
We can jump into it and then let you.
Yes, let's go ahead.
Okay. You may have already received the financial report for this month, are there any questions on any of the financials?
Really nothing to highlight. We are spending, we had a conference call with a member of finance just yesterday to go over our spending, and we are on track overall. They are wanting us to spend at least a third or 33% of our budget, and we're 32%. So, we're...
So, we're on track. Any questions about the time to report? We accept the time of reporting ahead. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda, you all, next item on the agenda will be the Deputy Director's Report.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
I'm Chair Stanley, Deputy Director of the Clayton County Library System. And let's start off with Coffee with the Live Show again, because I had the opportunity to interview Representative Rhonda Burnout. This was such a wonderful engaging conversation, because it gave us a deeper understanding of her path to public service and how her personal and professional background shaped her involvement in legislation. We know she comes from the school system. And so, one thing she encouraged was citizens to get involved. Don't believe everything that you hear, do the research for yourself. So, it was such a wonderful and engaging conversation, and thank you for everyone who came out to me. So, for October, October was a lively and meaningful month at the library, filled with celebrations, education, and community engagement. The library recognized National Hispanic Heritage Month, Breast Cancer Awareness Month, hosted the annual Staff Development Day, and observed Fire Safety Prevention Month amongst some of the activities. So, library staff created informative displays and organized engagement programs that foster a sense of community, learning, education, making October such a memorable and memorable month. So, let's talk about the numbers. I know sometimes people are interested in the numbers and the statistics, because our staff, really, just as Director here has stated, has really taken the time and the opportunity to make sure that they plan and prepare for this month. So, in October, the Clayton County Library System hosted a total of 369 programs in total, with a total participation of 4,274 patrons that came to our programs. So, let's talk about it. For children's, we had 227 programs with 1,514 patrons to participate. For teen programs, we had 57 programs with 243 participants. Adult programs, we had 137 programs with 2,570 participants. So, I pay kudos to the staff, because they worked hard at preparing for October. So, let's talk about a few and highlight a few of the 369 programs. So, it started off at the Headquarters Library. They had an escape room on October 17, and they hosted this for the seniors. And so, they offered many patrons, this was their first time being in an escape room, and wow, they did not get out. So, they stayed. But it was such a fun challenge, they wanted to do it again, so we will be doing that again. Now, October was National Bullying Prevention Month, and I think Sherri touched on it last time. On Tuesday, October 7, at 5:30 at Forest Park Branch, we welcomed Avery Dixon. If you know Avery Dixon, he is recognized for his appearance on America's Got Talent. He is such an inspiring man. He talks about his journey, and he plays the saxophone. He is talented. And so, he demonstrated his talent and resilience that really makes him a household name at this moment to our Clayton County family, as well as to the world, because he was on America's Got Talent. And so, a lot of people don't realize that he had challenges. He was a premature baby, and experienced bullying from his classmates, as well as his teacher, due to his weak voice and physical differences. And so, what he is, is he is an advocate. And so, he, through a candid discussion, he delivered an inspirational message of hope, perseverance, and resilience, showing that it's possible to rise above your challenges and circumstances. And so, we want to thank Mr. Avery Dixon, because he has done such a phenomenal job. And he comes to the Forest Park location on a regular basis. So, please check our calendar, because we always have a treat when we see him. Next, let's talk about Fire Prevention Month at the Forest Park Branch and the Lovejoy Branch. On Tuesday, October 21st, Public Safety Educator Anthony Goman of the Forest Park Fire and Emergency Team led the Fire Prevention Month Program for Children and Families. The event featured a fire truck, but also their new educational fire wagon, highlighting the dangers of lithium batteries, and demonstrating fire, smoke, and severe weather scenarios. So, attendees learned essential safety tips included calling 911, responding to house fires, and safe evacuation. Also, at the Lovejoy Branch, they featured the Clayton County Fire Department, where families had a wonderful and engaging experience, meeting with firefighters and exploring safety equipment, and learning important fire safety tips with hands on, memorable ways. So, they got a chance to go out to the fire truck and get a tour as well. So, let's talk about our hydroponic garden, hydroponic workshops. If you all remember before, a couple of meetings before Pansy Walker came, and she talks about hydroponic gardening. Now, we have one right here, if you go into the entrance of the Headquarters Library. We also have a hydroponic garden at the Marlborough and Riverdale Branch. And so, Pansy, Ms. Pansy Walker has been going around to the three branches with a series on hydroponic gardening. And so, she got a chance to, this was their final session, the three-part hydroponic workshop that focused on harvesting and also enjoying the first hour, so they got a chance to do that at the Marlborough Branch. And so, the library assistant Jasmine Alexander was assisting her, so that was a very good success. At the Riverdale Branch, right now, they are in the process of their garden, their garden is growing. And so, they mentioned that their harvest isn't scheduled until probably the first of November. So, if you are interested, please check our retakes and definitely stay tuned for one of those classes. Hispanic Heritage Month. So, let's talk about the Northwest Branch and the Riverdale Branch. To conclude Hispanic Heritage Month, the Northwest Branch welcomed a contracted performer group called Alma Mexicana. And this group performed and brought vibrant colors, costumes, and dances of Mexico to life. And so, the performance highlighted the rich culture traditions and various Mexican region, with each dance accompanied by historical and regional context. Also, at the Riverdale Branch on October 9, they celebrated National Hispanic Heritage Month during their preschool power hour. So, if anyone knows Jennifer Wiens, she does such an excellent job with the preschool power hour, as well as the sensory storytime. And so, she had a guest reader from Casa, which was Ms. Roxana de Cas. And so, while Ms. Roxana de Cas read in Spanish, she read in English, so it was about that storytime, and so, that was very fun. So, let's talk about teens, let's talk about having fun. We know that our teens, we try to make sure that we have something for them. But at the Northwest Branch this month, and we want to give them kudos, they experienced an exciting milestone. Their new assistant library, new services assistant successfully drew in 18 teams to participate in the team game night. And so, this was the first for the branch to have so many teams. And so, they mentioned that everyone was respectful, enthusiastic, and actively worked together. And so, we're excited about that. Kudos to them on this branch, Ms. E, the library assistant. So, let's talk about, which I know, if you have any bird little friends like I do, which is the pet parade and wellness presentation. So, October's pleasant weather allowed the Northwest Branch, if you were looking, you may see some of the pictures, to host a pet parade and wellness presentation in the library's gazebo. So, welcoming four wagon tails. And so, while the wellness presentation was, they said, "Perfect." And so, in partnership with the ally Animal Wellness Center, veterinarians, provide a valuable pet care and wellness education to non-patents. And so, that is wonderful. I am a pet owner myself, and so, I always, my pet lives with my parents, but I am a pet owner. So, I always enjoy, I know, she lives with my parents. So, I always enjoy when we get a chance to hear about, to hear about bird little friends, and that's the truth. We love our pets, they're like our babies, right? Well, I mean, she lives with my parents. I send the information. And so, let's talk about, I had the opportunity to participate and lead one of the autumn preschool power hours storytimes at the Riverdale Branch, and we just had a ball. It was amazing, you know, we always enjoy, I come from U Services as well, and so, that was a great time to be able to just let this happen. And so that was a great time to be able to just let loose and have a little pet. So I had a great time. The Helen Ruffin Reading Bowl. This is the first year of participation. This year marks the first time the Clayton County Library System is participating in the Helen Ruffin Reading Bowl, a statewide reading competition for students from all grade levels from county, regional, and state levels. So our library system is made up of the fourth and fifth graders. And Amanda, and Jen, and the Riverdale Branch, they held their first interest meeting. And so the group included two eager, intelligent, and competitive homeschoolers. And so they joked about going all the way to regionals, you know, and we said, let's get the locals first, you know. And so we're very excited about that. And so they will be representing us. And then one of the team members already read five of the ten books. So we are very excited about that. Now, one thing Director Pyrona mentioned is we are being invited to so many outreach events. We are really out in the community, so you will definitely see us. And so let's talk about a few of the outreach events that we participated in. The U Services staff, on October the twenty-third, they participated in the Eddie White Academic Literacy Night. On October the twenty-fourth, the U Services staff participated in Lake Ridge Elementary Fall Festival. On October the twenty-fifth, the U Services staff participated in the Clayton County Public Books Picture Book Bowling. On October the twenty-ninth, the U Services staff participated in Stillwell School of the Arts Parent College. And on October the thirtieth, Superior Elementary Literacy Night, the U Services staff participated. And so that was wonderful. And on October the eleventh, the Headquarters Library participated in the Monday's Meal Cluster Passport to Literacy Program. And the event was well-attended by twelve school-aged children, four teens, and twenty-one adults, engaging the community in literacy-focused activities. It doesn't stop there. We have even more. But I'll name a few. On October the seventeenth, the Clayton County Library System partnered with the Senior Services Department and the Georgia Attorney General's Consumer Protection Division to present a SCAM Stalker Seminar at the Sonia Singleton Gregory Senior Center. And this was an informative event. They would like to do it quarterly. And we would give kudos to Laura Eby, who actually facilitated that. So that was excellent. Also, on October the eleventh, Kim Jones from here at Headquarters Library, it's Laura Eby, brought the Bookmobile to the Digital Equity Block Party. And that is where the Department of Information Technology has the Digital Equity Block Party. We were able to participate, letting everyone know what we have to offer in the library system. Also, Mr. Raymond Wilcox and Ms. Regina Pejo volunteered at the Healthcare Fall Festival in Montauk, engaging with the community and providing valuable information to attendees. So this was their Healthcare Fall Festival. And on October the eighth, Rebecca James, who is our Assistant Director of the U Services, and Zeppelin, who is her supervisor, brought the Bookmobile to Rexley Middle School, allowing students to check out books for the Helen Ruffin Reading Bowl. And the visit served eight students, three teachers, and guess how many books? One hundred and one books checked out. So that is excellent. One thing is, we are being intentional, we are focusing, and we are partnering. So we make sure that when we go to the school system, we are consulting with the media specialists, the liaisons, and we want to know what it is that you want from us and what materials we need to bring. So kudos to all of the staff. And this is just, remember, it's just, it's three hundred and sixty-nine. This is just a small bit, but our staff have really been working, so we want to give them kudos.
Do you want to let Deputy Director standing for a report? Madam Secretary, do you need a report?
Do we have anyone who had a case for any of these events? One of those in October?
I just want to say something quickly.
Who's in here?
Back to the, kudos to the staff. I, with Avery Dixon, Stacy Halton, gives a music teacher. And he has worked with him since he was a child. Stacy is very talented, and I just want to, I mean, back to the kudos to the staff. The Clayton County Library System employs very talented staff members. And the more I get out and get to know them, like I did at Staff Development Day, which is another, and I'm just kind of trying to summarize all of this. But Staff Development Day, I enjoy immensely because I get a chance to fellowship with staff members outside of the library and got a chance to learn about some talents from some of the staff. So kudos again. That seems to be the representative theme today and always, but kudos to the staff. Talented, very talented. So those are a couple takeaways that I just wanted to share.
Every day is an adventure to walk through this door. I mean, this, I mean, that was happening in October. We're already, I guess, two weeks in in November, and it's been a lot going on, especially today. And, but I can't wait for everyone to hear that before. But there's a podcast that the library has, isn't it?
Yes.
Can you kind of touch on it? Like, when is it and how can we tune in?
I do my best. In addition to the Coffee from the Library Podcast, we have another one that we call
Litimate Conversations.
Litimate Conversations, but we also have
Oh, Books.
Books, Bites, and Buzz. And that platform, we're utilizing it more like a, almost like a public service announcement, to where information that we need to get out to the community, we bring folks in and, again, give them a platform. Months ago, we had a gentleman, he was a farmer. And he came in and he spoke about growing, having a garden, growing your own vegetables and what have you, and how to do that effectively. We were contacted yesterday by intergovernmental department wanting to be on Coffee with the Library, but the schedule's kind of full, so we're looking at allowing him to go on the Books, Bites, and Buzz Podcasts, again, so that he can disseminate and share the information that needs to be out there. So we are doing our best, multiple platforms. We have our social media, we have our website. All of those vehicles and all of those platforms, we still have people saying, I didn't know y'all did that. I didn't know y'all did that. And we struggle with the message, the audience, the best medium to get that message out there. And so, again, this is just another, another, we saw the need and we, again, try to fill the need.
Well, I know Trina does a great, trustee Trina does a great job of also pushing out content.
Absolutely.
Because she's plugged into the community as well. And I was interested in the podcast. I was trying to find it. Are you traveling?
Yes.
Is it one where you go to YouTube and you get it, or is it social media?
Yes, I think all of our podcasts are on YouTube.
Okay. Under the Clayton County Library System's YouTube page.
I think Litimate Conversations is the third Friday of every month, and it's at ten a.m.
Yes. Litimate Conversations, the third Friday
Of every month.
Of every month, yes. And Coffee with the Library, the first Monday of each month.
Books and Buzz.
Books, Bites, and Buzz. Yes, as we get participants and folks in, we'll schedule that. I don't have a regular schedule that will be on that yet.
Got you. Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you. Have, has the library partnered with the individual schools? Like, for example, a lot of elementary schools, they have their folder that they put in the paper, announces in their folder, most of every kid. So maybe the library can have like a paper calendar. I know that it'll be an expense of print, the paper. But maybe they're going to do some type of partnership with the school system and the library to cover that expense. But all of the students can have that paper in their folder. The kids see it, they get extended, or extended, and the parents have also like a little calendar.
Absolutely. We can definitely investigate that. And maybe even along the calendar, maybe have a QR code. Parents, let's get something quick for these events.
And just to extend what trustee Trina shared, I know previously we mentioned partnering with the school district and their communications department.
Yes.
And having that information because they send out, we send out tons of information that goes directly to our families and community. And then for schools, they utilize Dojo, so they don't have a bunch of paper anymore. But they have a digital copy that we could constantly send out to all schools. And then schools that send it out via Dojo, I think that would be another way to reach more. And then I did want to share again, to extend the kudos, trustee Sherri, everyone has already mentioned. You know, I wrote down the numbers, three hundred and sixty-nine programs, four thousand two hundred odd people in the space. And I know anytime we've reached out, as in school district or as just a community person, the response has always been yes. So we just thank you so much for always being so willing to support. Like, that's phenomenal. So just always so proud to say, you know, my library is just awesome. So just discovering those things, I mean, if we could also, as a board, when we see these things posted on Facebook, to share them on our personal page because we all have some type of reach. And that could also help with just sharing the word of the good things that are happening in our system.
Thank you so much.
That's a really great, like, segue, but it's a segue.
Yeah.
We'll have our U Services Department do that. Anything else?
Thank you. All right, right along, we're going to go into unfinished business, which will be getting about bylaws, virtual attendance, moving from listening to six board meetings in a county year back to three in a county year with the exceptions of hospitalization, serious illness, local family members, et cetera. You have a handout on your desk in front of you. I take that in with you and on the whole time, go over it. And we'll go on to our December board meeting.
Trustee, I have a question.
I believe, I believe it was last meeting, we were waiting on word from the state about if you can, I think it was voting.
Yes, that's what I'm saying.
Oh, so we did get word back?
Yes, and that's essentially what you have before you.
Thank you.
Word from our assistant state librarian is that the law that was passed, the language in there did not get adopted as it was intended. And there is no set language or text that is being recommended. They're saying that we should essentially create the bylaws within ourselves based around broad guidelines that that law provides. So essentially, that's what you have before you. And I'm sure we'll look at it, discuss it, and come up with something that's applicable to us. And one of the major things with that law is that you still have to have fifty percent participation, fifty percent attendance in person. And so that was something I think that was misleading prior to the law being passed. Thank you.
Okay, Director, I was just going to stand there. We are going to go in, just hopefully, other D C, D E, P N F.
Yes. So first one, I guess, is C, which is circulation policy. Are there any questions, concerns about the policy as it was rewritten? And it was rewritten to add the devices that we displayed the last time. You will show until, we're, I won't say constantly, but periodically, we receive new electronic devices that aren't in the existing circulation policy, and so we have to add them in. And so that's what was added to the circulation policy.
Any questions?
Now, for, for the policies, we will have to have a vote to approve because we will have to adopt to amend. The circulation policy as well as the refund policy, we previously did not have a refund policy. So again, this is something new, and this body will have to vote to approve so that we could enact a refund policy in that situation. So for those two, as well as the mobile device and the dress code policy, we will need votes.
Okay, you want to vote with them, maybe give, we can do all that on time, or you want to do it individually?
I think individually, in case individual questions come up for policy, they would move that way. Would that be acceptable?
All right, so you amended the circulation policy. Can I get a motion to approve the circulation policy? To make a motion to approve it? Okay, it's been properly moved by Secretary and Trustee Skidmore. Is there a second? It's been properly moved and seconded by Trustee Brown. Are there any questions? Hearing none, call up there and say aye.
Aye.
Any opposedes, any abstentions, the motion carries. The next item will be the refund policy. I have a motion, please.
Make a motion that we approve the refund policy?
There's been a motion been made by Vice Chair DuRan, which is, is there a second?
I say.
It's been properly moved and seconded by Trustee Lee. Are there any questions? Hearing none, call up there and say aye.
Aye.
Any vote on the abstention, that's your answer. Okay, Director, will you move with us?
Yes. So our handbook, the last, I think, edition was twenty eighteen. It was twenty eighteen, but we're looking at other areas in the handbook. But it was becoming pretty evident with our staff that we needed to put some stronger guidelines in place regarding all devices. Cell phones, headphones, earbuds, things that we were all pretty well accustomed to as well as knowledgeable. Some of our younger staff, again, sometimes in workplace, that workplace etiquette, that business etiquette isn't always there. So we're having to sometimes teach, train, and just educate them on what's acceptable and what's not. And so we felt it was a good time to update and put in a mobile device policy. This will go into our employee handbook. And so once it is adopted, all staff will have to sign off that they have received it, that they have read it, and understand it. And so the next two policies essentially are follow the same guidelines.
Okay, is that the one that we spoke about, our asking about in social media?
The social media is something separate. We are waiting on the county to come up with a county-wide social media policy, and we will follow that.
Why don't we have heard about the mobile device policy? And I get a motion, please, to approve. Can I get a motion to approve the mobile device policy?
Can I approve the mobile device policy?
It's been properly moved by trustee Koali, who's a second.
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded by trustee Isaac. Are there any questions? Hearing none, call up there and say aye.
Aye.
Any opposedes, any abstentions, passes, unanimous.
The dress code, again, it's an update to the handbook. Some of the language in the former dress code policy was a little dated. And again, twenty eighteen, it may not seem like a long time ago, but fashion changes, it changes quickly. And so we, again, felt the need that they needed a revision, we needed to look at things. One of the, I guess, overarching sentiments behind this is that I wanted to make it less restrictive. The previous policy stated that staff could wear jeans on Fridays. That was kind of dressed out of day. For a lot of our part-time staff, our younger staff, For a lot of our part-time staff, our younger staff, they don't necessarily have business casual or business professional wardrobes. That one pair of clean, good jeans may be all that they have. And that good pair of Nike Air Force Ones may be the best pair of shoes that they have. And so recognizing that and understanding that, we adopted the new revisions of this policy to kind of reflect that. And so jeans can be worn any day, as long as they're clean, as long as they're not torn, and they're presentable. We want to make sure also that folks are wearing the proper attire for what they do. If you come to work and you have a top-top on and you're shelling books, or if you are in a miniseries and you're trying to shell books, it's not proper attire for the position for the job functions that you're required to do. So again, looking at that, we revised that we change some of the terminology in here, and hopefully, again, it will be less restrictive. All of our staff have library shirts that have the logo on them. And so I don't want to say it's a uniform, but if that's the shirt that they choose to wear and they have multiple shirts, absolutely. So again, hoping that the policy will be wide-based out there by the staff, and they'll feel more comfortable with what they have become to work because I'm open to that.
Okay, you've heard the dress code policy has arrived. I get a motion, please.
I make a motion to approve the dress code policy.
It's been properly moved by trustee Isaac. Is there a second? Seconded by trustee Shaw. Are there any questions? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed, any abstention, passing, unanimous. Okay, Director, we're in, we'll get to new business. So nothing else? I get a motion to adjourn?
I'm a motion to adjourn.
A second.
Okay.
Any about? Hopefully, everyone has received an email or notification. We have training, order trustee training on the 22nd. So our Assistant State Librarian, Mr. Ben Carter, will be coming here on Saturday at 10:00 a.m. on the 22nd of November for more training. So if you are available, please, 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 please. Set my place. I'm sorry, it will be at the Northwest Branch.
Northwest Branch?
10:00 a.m. and on the 22nd. It's about an hour and a half. You want to get in, hit the hot spots, the high-level stuff, and get there. So he has a four-hour presentation. I'm like, nope. Down dirty, and even though not to do, to do, and we can all be about it. He is a great facilitator. He breaks it down, he's very approachable, and presents the information on a level that definitely we can understand and follow. So it's good training. You hold a West Library, November 22nd, 10:00 a.m.
Yeah, secretary, can you push an email on that? Close this, shut down. Thank you. Okay, it's properly moved by trustee Ryan and seconded by vice chairman Andrews. Chair, are there any questions? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed, any abstention, unanimous.